So it's five oh seven, uh we'll get the meeting started. And um let's start off with any guests in attendance?
This one, my daughter Sophia.
Oh, okay, awesome. Welcome, Sophia.
Hi Sophia, it's a great name.
Oh, very nice. Thanks, Sean. Um so we'll uh we'll get started. So um. If we don't have any other guests, um do I have a motion to approve the meeting uh minutes from the last two? Meetings, October and November, uh please? Alright, I got seven people there, there, so give me the first one? Was that?
Yeah, just anybody, just write names down, it's all good, we all.
Sheila first and Sean second?
Sure, before we, before we, you got my email about the minutes for November, the bottom was incorrect?
I did, yes, yeah.
Okay, so that needs to be revised, cuz I didn't make a motion to close last meeting cuz I wasn't here.
Correct, yep. And who's that Sheila, Sheila was just like, just say anybody. No, I I'll I'll get you off there, Sean, and I'll revise the November minutes to reflect the fact that uh Sean was not. Actually uh at the meeting to second, second the motion, okay? Okay, ready? Okay, good, so let's get started, um so um. Not too many things happened uh earlier to, earlier this year, but um. One thing that did happen was the House bill uh which was five zero zero two, now eight zero zero two. As amended by Lamont um has passed with his signature. So um it doesn't really hold uh any kind of um ramic ramifications for us. Today, um but in the future, uh it it could, so I would like everybody to just kind of uh. Maybe do a little bit of research on uh Bill eight zero zero two. And uh see what it holds for Old Line, uh and your thoughts would be greatly appreciated at the next meeting. Not uh, you know, as we're not a commission that is able to do any kind of zoning or planning, but we can recommend. Um ideas to zoning and planning to carry forward. Uh as zoning revises their um their agenda really altogether, all their uh rules and regulations together. Um so if anybody has any thoughts on that, I'd be happy to to discuss. Alright, so let's move on.
Sorry, Jen, I couldn't get to my mute button.
Go right ahead.
Excuse me, I think it would be um helpful, at least for me. Um if we could, m- maybe in our January. Meeting on it together, making sure that we all, like I haven't gotten to read through, I know I've heard others' opinions around it, but I don't. I feel like that's something that so many people are talking about and and it's something that obviously. Could have an impact on us, so I feel like I, you know, we should understand it well, is it possible that we could? You know, set aside that like half an hour at the January meeting to just dig into it a little bit?
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else feels that way, maybe it's just me, and if that's the case, I'll, I can figure it out.
No, I'm sure other people are feeling the same way, so um what I can do is send out maybe a a synopsis of. The, well, it'll be hard to do a synopsis of the bill, but of the pertinent parts of the bill anyways, that would. Um possibly uh you know uh impact Old Line. And um I get that to you ahead of uh, ahead of the new year, so that you can digest it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Jen, I'm pretty sure that Martha Marks and Devon Carney. I'm pretty sure they have um bullet points, so it might be worth just reaching out to both of them. And getting them to provide their bullet points to us, so we hear from both sides.
Yep, that'll be great, Sean, thank you, appreciate that, I'll do that.
Jen, this is Fred, uh I I think this is gonna be a, you know, a big year for Affordable Housing Commission. Uh you know, this bill is a hundred pages and it's hard to really read it and digest it. I've seen some summaries that themselves were seventy-five pages, so. Uh you know, I think uh uh someone or. Or multiple people need to take a really good look, working with, I think, Rivercog that. Uh uh and probably other people, Martha Marks and uh and Carney. Who are um, you know, scrutinizing this, you know, I think that we are gonna, that Old Line probably will end up. Participating in a regional uh uh housing plan. Uh probably not gonna write our, an individual housing plan, but it also has re, you know, repercussions for. The zoning rewrite and planning and zoning, so uh.
Quite right, yeah.
So I think some number of us need to take a deep dive, working with these people. Uh as a task, as an Affordable Housing Commission task. You know, separate from all the other tasks, just because I I. I I think asking all of us to do it by ourselves, probably, you know, some of us. You know, do a little, some will do more, but I I think, you know, someone. Some people need to be focused so they can work with the other, the bodies that are also working on this and. Uh get a better handle on it, it'd be my thought.
That that's a great, yeah, that's a great, uh.
So a question I have then, if if there is, I mean, we we can't, it sounds like we may not know this, but if there is. Um a strong potential that we could be working together on a regional plan. Um I I would assume that at some point. Uh representatives from, you know, the various constituents would come together, so I'm wondering, is it? I mean, Sean, you mentioned um bullet points that Devon and and Martha have already created. Would it be appropriate to invite them or someone else as guests to our next meeting? And kind of walk us through some things, or is that, you know, a a overkill on their time, considering they may be involved in many of those conversations?
I I I, you know, I, this is Fred, I think that. You know, everyone's kind of digesting this bill right now, I don't know if next month would be premature, but uh. Either, you know, I could reach out to Rivercog and see what they have, I I think they're the. The regional body that's gonna be drawing up a regional plan, and I think they probably. More than either one of those representatives would have some preliminary handle and and uh I can ask them if they. Want to come to our next meeting, or you know, if they've had time to formulate a plan.
That's a good idea.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, even if we, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh no, I was just gonna say to Fred that um Eliza Lowpresti, who is our regional uh Rivercog representative. On the Housing Commission, um she would be the point of contact for that, Eliza Lowpresti.
Eliza Low.
Capital L O, uh capital P R E S T I, yeah, but I'll I'll send you her email address, yeah.
Okay, so you'll shoot her email to me?
Uh huh, yep.
Okay. Okay.
The other thing, I'm I'm wondering if it's, if it's, it sounds like it's a a pretty big document, and even the summaries are big documents, but we could, you know, we could maybe. In preparation for the next meeting, although coming right off the holidays, maybe we can jigsaw it out. And I I haven't looked at the actual document, I don't know if it's chunkable. In ways that make sense, like a couple of us could take, you know, the first twenty pages and we could just share out with one another, it's just a thought. If that's too much.
I don't know if it's jigsawed though, but I mean, the first ten pages are definitions and those definitions need to be. Inserted in various parts of the document to be able to understand it, and then it refers back to other.
It's not a quick read.
A hundred pages.
It's not, and the and and those pages are um shrunk down from a larger document also, so. It's it's not something that I would say to parse out uh to people. Um but yeah, but I think between uh Devon and Eliza and um Fred. We could probably, you know, get to the meat of it, you know, and and uh the. The subject for Old Line, basically, it's up, it's not like um, so in the old bill of five zero zero two. It was kind of clear that it was uh, okay, Old Line House Bill four hundred and twenty-two, uh you know, affordable housing units. Um that was pretty crystal clear, but in this one, it's more of a regional um uh thing that is uh does have assignments. Um it still ha- has that, but um it doesn't have the actual numbers. And um so it makes it a little bit more nebulous um as far as the bill goes, but. Uh I think that between Devon and Sean and um and Martha. Uh et cetera, Martha Marks, et cetera, we could get to the bottom of it and see what impact it does have for uh zoning. And also remember that um Michael Fogliano is very keen on. On the housing uh bills and and things, and he's also on the zoning board, so. Um so it will do us some good to actually work with them to, you know, figure out what they know, what we know, that kind of thing.
So let me, let me make some uh initial calls and forays and uh. The, at least my best. Uh approach or thoughts on the approach to digesting this and what we can do and. Uh then I I I think, you know, some smaller number of us should, you know, get involved. Uh because there there will be a lot of uh involvement uh this year. So um you know, we like volunteers to do that, and uh that's all I'm gonna say for now.
I was, so I think I heard Sheila volunteer.
Sheila?
Volunteer?
Sorry, sorry, once again, I couldn't get to my mute button. No, that all, that all makes sense, and no, you absolutely do not hear me volunteer, however, I will do what is needed to do.
You're the best.
Uh this is Jim, and I I agree with you that, I agree with everyone on on here that. Uh it's kind of our obligation to to understand this, I mean, at a bare minimum. Um if you want to be involved on a board like this, that's that's kind of, this is what our, what we're expected to do, so. Um I don't know how many people you're looking for, but this is certainly in my wheelhouse and something that. Uh I deal with all the time and I wanna understand as it, you know, now that it's changed, definitely. Um I can certainly volunteer to to be in that group that focuses on it, to understand it. And 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 to explain it to others, which is the really key element, it's very confusing.
Exactly.
There's a ton of misinformation, um you know, it's. It it is a lot of things, and it also isn't a lot of things at the same time, so. Whether or not the zoning commission, you know, understands it completely and can implement it, maybe that's our responsibility to help them understand. Um so that the new regs can reflect to this change or vice versa. Um so hopefully I can help, so let me know, Fred.
Alright, thanks, Jim.
I love that, Jim, appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll go with that, so Sheila, Jim, Fred, uh myself. Um and and you know, really anybody else that wants to, what we wanna do, Fred, probably is. Um just take a little bit of a deeper dive into it, what I can do is collect the information. That's already out there um in the public and circulate it to uh this. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hold on, sorry. I'm Sean, that's right, so we had somebody join us, um her her first name is Roth, what's your last name? Higgins, Ross Higgins, to add to the uh minutes.
Okay, thank you, Sean, appreciate it, welcome. Uh let me just get that down, okay. Okay, so what we were saying was um, let's get a little group of us together, um so I've got Sean, Jim. Fred, myself, uh Sheila, and we will um circulate some information around eight zero zero two. Um get kind of down to the nitty gritty on it and uh see if there's anything that we do. Actually need to respond to or react to um in uh in the zoning uh commissions. Uh favor, so.
So, Jen, I have a question, I mean, if we wanna email each other, can we do that?
Um we uh have to do the whole board together, um rather than. Uh my understanding is that we have to do the whole board together, or whole commission together, rather than just uh because we're more than three. Uh or people, so we'll have to do the whole board together, just as an information pass.
So that would be at next, the next meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I I think a good way for anybody that's part of this would be to funnel information to Fred since he's. Or you, Jen, for your co-chair, and then you can decipher whether to send it out to the group, I don't, just my opinion.
Yeah, I think um Sean, what um maybe Fred was alluding to is that um. If we are facing a quorum, if we email just four people rather than the entire group.
What, no, no, what if we have some information to disseminate, can we do that?
Yes, hundred percent, yep, yep.
As long as we're not voting or um or discussing something.
That's correct, yeah, yep, yep, that's my understanding, yes.
Alright.
Alright, so I'll um I'll do what I have from the Regional Housing Committee, um from the uh uh Rivercog. Uh from Lowpresti, and I'll disseminate that to uh everybody here.
That's great, thanks, Jen, thank you everybody for that.
Okay, cool. Alright, so um I don't want to um skip over new business, but um just Ms. Rose Higgins, do you have any um? Oh, I'm sorry, Ross, I thought you said Rose, I'm sorry. Um would you like to um address the commission on anything?
No, I just was wondering though, is there not a quorum, is that why that the conversation was about that?
Oh no, we have a.
No, not at this time.
Okay, awesome, alright, so let's get on to our calendar, so for the for the new year, the town hall. And would like to um kind of get their um meeting room scheduled, so we've been meeting this uh first Wednesday. Um would we like to maintain that schedule, five P M, Town Hall Mezzanine uh room for next year? And then, of course, we'll make acceptances for the uh uh Fourth of July and Memorial Day. That those kind of things like as we did this year.
Fred, I think that.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay?
Okay, well, like, um let's just get a motion, so could I have a motion to um set the meeting schedule for the first Wednesday of each month? For twenty twenty-six calendar year in the Town Hall at the Mezzanine Room? At five P M?
I motion that we have a first Wednesday of every month at five o'clock in the Mezzanine Meeting Room. With exceptions for holidays, or as exige Jim's teeth dictate. That's my motion.
Could I have a second? Jim, thank you. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any discussion? Great, hearing none, the motion passed, so I'll forward that back to um Town Hall. Thank you. So the, the uh next thing on our agenda was really just to um. Go back to discuss um the budget, um which is um a fluid uh emotion. But we we will have to have, submit our budget to the Finance Committee of Town Hall um very soon. Uh for this coming up uh fiscal year, which would be July um uh this year. Um so far, we've had um, we're working off of last year's budget, apparently. So we have not spent our F Y twenty-four, twenty-five budget yet. Um so what I think we should do is submit um this, a similar budget, because we are going to be in need of the attorneys. And uh the uh site developer and um and that kind of thing, as we get the driveway for McCullough going. And hopefully, the driveways for Kimmich and Grandview going as well, and get those site plans laid out. So our engineer, Tom Metcalf, um has been working on those, but we have not yet received his. Uh his bills uh for that, so um Fred, I don't know if you wanna elaborate, but I think we should go ahead and submit the same. Um around a fourteen to fifteen thousand dollar um tab for the Finance Committee for F Y twenty-six.
Yeah, I would uh uh I'm anticipating some, a little more legal fees, because we're gonna have to draw up. Uh deeds and perhaps easements and uh. So I I think we, you know, might need more legal. I mean, we didn't really have anything drawn up the year before, and you know, there there were significant legal bills, so I would. Probably increase our ask for by twenty-five percent on the legal fees and similarly, the. Hopefully. Same for the engineering fees, because, you know, once the engineers get going, they they. Uh will need to draw the, you know, provisional site plan and. Uh some site work on um Kimmich and Grandview, so. You know, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, but I I think we should bump those up a little bit.
Yeah.
Can I, can I jump in here with something?
Yes.
So, um I, not having been involved with the budgeting process for the town in the past. And and certainly not the budgeting process with um a- affordable housing. I know that there's been talk, and it's on the agenda a little bit later, to talk about a structure for, you know, how we're going to. Um you m- move things forward and um at some point, there was discussion with. Uh a couple of us possibly doing a co-chair model like you all have been doing. I've, I feel as though if if I were to take one of those roles, I I would like to take a. And this is not to say that other people haven't taken a close look, I know that you have, I'm just a, I'm I learn by doing. And so before we submit anything, if 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 it's anticipated that I that I might, you know, be in some type of a lead role, I def. I mean, I think for all of us, it's good for us to understand it, but um I would wanna take a close look at. Like, what have we got in the past three years, what have we spent, the, is is Tom our engineer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for for McCullough, and has he invoiced us anything?
Well, it's, it's kind of weird, because uh we've been told that we haven't spent anything, but. I know that I have submitted significant bills for both uh the survey or the engineer and. My carry uh uh that that I can't remember when, but maybe it was before June of last year.
Okay.
It was.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think.
Before we agree to, go ahead.
Oh no, I'm sorry, Sheila, I didn't over on you, um what what I um, what I what I meant to say was that I think that um. That Fred and I can catch up with Anita, um you know, on on these things with Tom also. Um because uh we we have definitely paid his bills, uh we don't owe him anything as far as I know. But it's unusual that from July first of uh this year, that we have not had another bill from him, so. Yeah, we're just uh.
And everything that was happening, yeah, so I I just, I guess I would um, just from from my own experiences around budgeting. I I would just like to have a better understanding of the accounting for it, like what we've, what we've spent. And I know that, you know, you all have been doing a lot, like you've set everything up, and the hope is now that. Things are gonna start to move in this next year, and so, um while I hear you, Fred, on a, you know, like add twenty-five percent. Um I I I don't know, I would just like to take a a different look at. Or or a closer look at what we anticipate spending, what we've spent. Um I I would love to understand it, if nothing else.
That'd be great.
I agree, I agree with Sheila, um when it, when is it due to get them what we approved for our budget in our committee here?
Um so they would like to have it for their January meeting.
Prepared and we could vote on it next meeting, and it will be January, but we do meet the first week of January, so I think it should be fine.
Thanks, Sean, yep, yeah, let's let's do that, um so the other thing that the commission should be aware of is that we do have. Um ARPA funds still that we need to, uh we don't need to spend, but um we have the opportunity to use ARPA funds. Um by the uh by September of twenty twenty-six, and so um we were um committing that to the driveways. Um to the extension of the driveway at the McCullough properties, and and the widening of that.
Jen, you just reminded, so you talking about ARPA money, I'm gonna put money on that the bills. It's showing that we didn't spend any money on the town budget, because if you don't use the ARPA money, you lose it. So any smart town's gonna put all the bills to the ARPA money first, that might be where the bills went.
Ah, uh huh, okay, okay, that's a good point, Sean, thank you, yeah. Uh let me check with Anita now, um what I don't want is like everybody running to Anita and Town Hall, so. Uh Fred, Fred and I will handle that ourselves, and just so we have a single point of contact with um Anita and finance. Um um and we'll get that straightened out by the next meeting.
And we we did receive uh. Uh an email from Anita, the finance person, with, I think what we spent for the last three years. And uh.
Could you guys share that with us?
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm saying, so we we have that, and I'll share it.
Okay, so we'll um, we'll get that straightened out, and Sheila, thank you for those observations, uh we'll definitely.
Sure.
Um stay up on. Alright, anything else on the budget? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on, um anything um with uh new news, um Fred, on the project from? Tom or Dick?
So, the fire chief has said, I have no problem with your plan, and. Uh we've asked him for a letter, but he's uh wait, I think he's waiting for a site plan from. Tom, the engineer, and so uh. Did you have an opportunity to check with Tom to see when he's planning to have that? Uh, you know.
Yeah, I have no response.
No response?
Yeah, uh huh, is that uh Mike McCarthy, right?
Well, from Tom Metcalf, do you do you know when he's?
Oh, from Tom, yeah, no.
No idea, okay.
Where's his office, where's he located?
Deep River, I think.
Uh huh, Essex, yeah, Deep River.
Or Essex, okay.
I mean, I'm happy to take a drive over, like, we gotta get this thing go, because don't don't we have to? If my understanding is is accurate, we have to, we have to have that letter. In order to get on the agenda for planning or zoning?
No, but so, no, we don't. So we want to have a complete uh applet subdivision application. And the the only real issue is uh the driveway. But you 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 certainly need a proposed site plan so that the planning commission can look at it and say, okay. I see what you're talking about, and that site plan will include, you know, the 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 borders of the 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 deeds. It the the borders of an easement, borders of the driveway, the proposed housing location well and septic. With all that, I I think they'll have no problem saying, this looks good, we approve. But uh we need some basic things and the, one of the basic things is for the fire chief. To say, uh what you propose is fine with respect to emergency vehicles. If we don't have that, there there there's a very significant risk that they'll say, well, this application is incomplete, wait another month.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Yeah, and and it's not, it's not Sheila as drastic as a oh my God scenario, but uh but.
Yeah, 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 I don't mean to overreact, I I apologize for that, and again, this is no, uh you know, no disrespect on anyone. I know everybody's. I think, I I'm just, I I think I'm just in kind of, I'm I'm in a mode right now and I'm kind of like, well, can I call him? Let's go, dude, like, July first, we haven't heard from you, come on.
No, 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 you're not, I'm with you, I, yeah. I don't, I wouldn't, anybody to take away that it's like a drastic mood, but but yes. Um however, we would like to get a firm uh response in writing and we would like to get it before the zoning board as soon as possible. Um to get this uh sub uh application done and uh and over with. Um just the next step um in this and hopefully it will be done by February.
Just so while you know that there's there's, that the uh, we need to get this application all tied up and submitted by January eighth. That's the uh.
Okay, so so Fred, do you want me to um give Tom a call tomorrow again and um then see if I can move him along?
Yeah, and and, you know, if it would be helpful, uh. You meet with him, I meet with him, just, you know, I. It's, it's silly, this uh lack of response we're getting, so. Yeah, I'm I'm around and uh. With them anytime, anywhere.
Alright, well, let me give him a call in the morning and then um and then I will touch base with you in the later half of the morning. And uh let you know what I find out.
Beautiful.
And if we need to team up, we'll do that. And thank you Sheila for your help. We might tag team you in on this. Alright, so cool, so um so that's that, okay, we'll do. Um so that that um anything on um Kimick and Grandview? Anything else there that we need to get done, same with uh Dick and Tom, or we're just gonna roll on with them, I'm assuming?
Unless he says, I can't do it, I'm sick, I'm too slow, I don't wanna do it, you're annoying me too much, just. You know, if he says that, then we have to find somebody else, but I I I I see no indication that he would, but.
No, no, uh but uh I will um actually, I'll bring that up with him tomorrow and see if we can just stay on point. With that tomorrow and um and get a firm answer one way or the other from him.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. Alright, so um so that's all the old business, uh anybody else have any new business they would like to discuss?
So uh, hearing none, uh. Uh you know, I would like to talk about uh next year's leadership.
Okay, let's go.
So Jen, your 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 term is up when?
Uh, January thirty first.
And so are you gonna be around for the next meeting?
I will be somewhere. I may be on the phone, yeah, maybe on the phone, yeah, honestly.
So I think tomorrow, uh this next year's gonna be a big year, I would appreciate as much help as I can possibly get. I am uh I'm willing to stay on as a co-chair, I would like. Uh uh someone to co-chair with me and if there are, you know, two folk. That are motivated and and enthusiastic about being co-chairs, I would support that. You know, I would like to stay on and sort of push the construction stuff through. But I'm willing to uh, you know, I'm not gonna bail um.
Well, so I think, could we talked a little bit last time, Sheila and I, you know, are willing to to co-chair. But Fred, we don't, neither of us, well, I'm speaking for Sheila, but I'm sure she'll be, neither of us want to kick you off of co-chair. So if you want to be co-chair still, that's that's fine.
There there there's nothing. With being co-chair. If you guys, I mean, I think you guys are motivated and organized and enthusiastic, if you guys want to co-chair. I would really support that.
Okay, so I did apply to yesterday, maybe it was, to. To be a regular member once Jen comes off, so that plan would work. If the selectmen's office agrees to make that happen. Um, but I don't think really anything can happen until Jen officially comes off. Cause until, so it really probably would look more like February.
Okay.
And somebody else comes off Jen too, right?
Um, yeah, so so right now, um so myself, um just because I'm moving to North Carolina. It's not because I'm abandoning you, but because I will still be like uh calling into the commission, et cetera. Because I'm very vested in, of course, Habitat for Humanities efforts to help us with this property. Um, so I'm not abandoning you, but I I don't feel like I could be a member of the commission if I'm actually living in North Carolina. So so, having said that, um I'll still call in, but um myself, um. Uh Amy, um I'm not sure about your intentions. And then uh I know Lori Walker is moving on to L Y S B board. So she is as an alternate is al- also going to be um resigning. So there are several uh several opportunities available for people, uh if you have friends and family that want to uh sign up. We can still use all the all the uh people that, you know, are available. So there are plenty of opportunities, but yes, uh Sean, I will be um uh my last meeting will be officially will be uh the January meeting.
So Sheila, I'm curious, are you willing to, do you take this man as your? Chairperson?
I think that um uh there's so many things I could say to that right right now, Fred. That that works beautifully for both of us probably, because this is, you know, I and I don't want to speak for you, Sean, but. Um, man, no one's ever asked me if I was gonna take that man, anyway, um. Not since I was like sixteen, sorry, Sophia, um. So, y- yes, I absolutely, I would love to get to know Sean and love to work with Sean. I also know that there are some people, Jim, Amy, other people on the committee, that y- you know. Again, not to speak for Sean, but you know, we're we're kind of the newer ones in the group, and so um. I'm happy, I I feel like it's, I feel like I'm yelling, I'm sorry, everybody. Um, it feels to me like this is, as we get moving, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as we get moving into this next year. And and the different things that we have to kind of break apart and really d- dive into. It feels to me like there are areas in which we could identify, where like, you know, Fred, you just mentioned, like, moving the construction along. So maybe that's your wheelhouse, I I I feel like, you know, whether it is doing so as a co-chair. Or if we determine, these are the things that need to happen, and so who's good at these things? And we divide and conquer, like Jim volunteered himself for digging into the, you know, the bill because he's the it's his wheelhouse. So, you know, I volunteered to drive to Deep River, I I I have no problem bugging somebody, I, you know, I try to do it nicely, but. Um, you know, so i- i- if, I guess it's a lot of words to say, yes, I will take Sean as my co-chair. If everybody else is okay with that, and and once Sean becomes official, I do solemnly swear. Best that I can, it's just that we're gonna have to all really divide and conquer, okay, I'm done talking.
Yes, I, yes, we agree. Want to be a co-chair?
Okay, co-co-chairs. I think I think two is enough, uh so.
Well, no, I think we wanted to make sure that the others on the call had a chance to speak.
Yeah. Lori and.
I think the interest that, sorry.
Yeah, Lori, uh Amy, uh any Jimmy, any thoughts?
I think the interest that we're seeing from from some somewhat new folks is fantastic, um. So if new new people want to get involved, and I think that's great. Uh but yeah, I think three chairs would for a for a commission that has no regulatory ability would be outrageous, yes.
Thank you, Jimmy.
I think we should just all be chairs, and I want to know why Sean doesn't have to take me as his lawfully wedded co-chair.
It's alright, okay, alright, so let's um let let me uh see if I can summarize here. So um so what we're saying is that, um so Fred. So going forward, after the January meeting, uh where I will be off of the commission. Um what we're saying is that um you will stay and uh Sheila and Sean. Will uh will be then elected as co-chairs.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. Alright, does anybody have any uh discussion around that, anybody else wants to comment on that or anything to do with this?
Well, it's really timing, I mean, Jen, you're still gonna be co-chair until January thirty first. And then in February at our first meeting is when we would vote.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we'll have to vote on it in January so that we can give the Board of Selectmen the uh. The uh opportunity to weigh in, if you will.
But I don't know how we vote on it if I'm not a regular member yet.
Yeah, let me talk to Martha about that. Yeah, I'll see if I can get some clarity around that, I I appreciate that. Yeah, that's all very, yeah, silly, but uh but we need to do it right, so let's do it right, and uh I'll call Martha about that tomorrow.
Jen, are are you gonna be around tomorrow?
I am uh around in North Carolina tomorrow, yes.
Oh, I mean, you're not here now.
No.
Alright.
No, but uh I could make myself available though if you need.
I don't expect you to fly back just to.
I'm driving, that's right, um so the um, okay, so that's uh that'll be taken care of. Uh I will speak with Martha, uh hopefully uh tomorrow, I'll get on her calendar anyways and uh do that. Uh so, oh, let's see, any other um new business? That folks want to bring up? Okay, alright, hearing none, uh we'll go back to um Fred, any other business that you would like to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, well, I'll submit the calendar to town hall tomorrow. Um and um we'll, uh outside of the usual holidays, we'll have the first Wednesday of each month at five P M. In the mezzanine uh meeting room reserved. And um going forward, there should be no problem with that. Uh any other business that any other member would like to bring up? Okay, hearing none, I call for the meeting to be adjourned. Fred in one? Second.
Second.